So for this town plan update, it was a pretty big update that was funded through municipal planning grant. A number of key sort of changes first were a big change to the vision statements. Simplifying them to fewer statements, continuing to focus on the importance of agriculture and also renewed focus on things like community and the people in Fairfield. The, to go along with this, the plan was reorganized a little bit where the the tomorrow, tomorrow section of the plan was reorganized according to those five vision statements. And an implementation table was added at the beginning of the plan. Also highlight those implementation actions that are directly related from the vision statements. And those vision statements were developed with the planning commission and through the survey process and public outreach. Also, the, there's an attempt to simplify that tomorrow section. Remove goals and policies that were either redundant or no longer relevant. Or really spoke to things that were outside of the, the town scope to really complete things that are more like state policies, that type of thing. A large, a number of infographics were added, especially the today section. And replaced a lot of the charts that were previously there because they're a little more readable. There are still some charts in places where it makes sense. An enhanced energy plan was added and that provides the town certain benefits. In the section 248 process, they get substantial deference instead of due consideration for having an adopted enhanced energy plan. Then the other two kind of things that were done was there was a shift in focus away from, there's a lot of focus on the permit allocation system that had previously existed. So shifted focus away from that with that no longer being in place. Towards some of the other land use goals and then altering the land use categories to just match what's currently within the town zoning.
So do you want to go through any parts of it? No, I don't have a copy of it. It's all online.
Does the copy in front?
Is it?
In the grab?
Yeah. You want to go over bits and parts, Emily?
So I'd go over what?
You want to go over some of it? Like an overview or what do you want to do?
Do you want me to bring up the plan? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Oh, I would also have to get so sharing to do that.
Emily needs sharing ability. I guess we should have made me the host instead of you. Jonathan will be right back. He's just got to go to his office and do that.
Sure thing.
One of the, one of the things that was brought up when some community members read the plan from and the rest of the select board was that they'd like to rewrite the whole history section. I think it was Ned and Zach that said they'd like to rewrite the whole history section. So that's a goal for the next time we redo it.
Which will be what?
It's eight years. Right, Emily? Eight years?
Yeah, they're now on an eight year cycle. So you update your plan every eight instead of every five gives you a little more time to actually focus on implementation. A little more time. All right. It looks like Jonathan made you the host now, Melissa. So you should be able to give me permission.
I just created a new host.
Okay.
I hear it.
Hey, so I can, this is the draft of the town plan here that I'm scrolling through. These are the five new vision statements. This first vision statement is essentially unchanged. It's the primary and fundamental intention of Fairfield from a rural agricultural town. That was also the first vision statement and last plan. So that focus is still there. We updated, there's update to the second statement to focus more on, previously focused more on the permit allocation system and now focuses more just on supporting agriculture in general. Third statement again, taken from the previous plan update to do with supporting development of all scare enterprises in the village areas. And then two sort of new statements that combine some of the previous ones. Fairfield values preserving our natural and historic features and Fairfield is a vibrant and welcoming community. So this is the implementation table. This is something that the RPC has been helping a lot of towns do for their plan. It just provides a really simple format to focus on those actions. Which have been identified as something that might be able to happen in the next eight years. So this kind of goes through the different actions that were identified for each of these vision statements, things like talking about planning commission potentially developing inventory of home businesses. Supporting the efforts to expand broadband, supporting efforts of recreation committee, those types of pieces. So as Melissa mentioned, there haven't been a lot of changes to the history section. If in this plan update, and so that's something that could happen at the next plan update. Or I don't know why. This is the infographics that were added. They're also throughout the actual section, but they're also at the beginning here. So throughout the today section, these infographics have been added as well as these top line sentences. That explain the general trend and to try to make the plan more readable.
Just talks about where we're at now, like what
Yeah.
In terms of where people work and where people live and that most people travel out of town to work and it talks about median income.
What is that?
Emily, go back to what is our medium income. Let her remember.
The income? Yeah, hang on, where's income? Scroll back up here. Yeah, this is household and yeah, so this is per capita income up here and this is median income at the bottom. This chart shows this red is Franklin County and this blue is Fairfield, which has been trending since 2010 above Franklin County. Same with per capita income, although the difference is a little less. Which is not surprising, given that a lot of Fairfield households are more likely to have two income earners. Trends in housing, mainly single family, own your occupied homes. And housing affordability, it continues to be, there is a very small affordability gap for median income households. But that's very small. So housing continues to be relatively affordable for those with median incomes. But affordable, owning homes unaffordable for those with lower incomes. But renting and mobile homes remain relatively affordable options in Fairfield as well.
Emily?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Does this utilize the 2020 census data? Do we know that data is available?
Melissa, can you repeat the question? I'm getting a lot of echo. It's hard to hear.
I was asking if it's using 2020 census data and I said, I sincerely doubt that.
No, this is mainly using data from the 2018 American Community Survey. Which is less accurate than the census data, but it's updated every year. The 2020 census data won't be out for still a number of years. Probably at the next eight year plan cycle, it will be ready. Unfortunately, it takes quite a while for them to return that.
Thank you.
Hey Emily, this is Julie. I just noticed a, an error under the education.
Yep.
Page 28, there's a mention of the bus service and that the school still owns the buses and they do not. They contract that out.
I thought we fixed that.
Yeah, I think it's still in there from what I read today.
Okay, I'm sorry. I might've missed that.
Oh, that's okay. You caught a lot.
We can certainly make sure that that gets fixed to be accurate. So yeah, this reviews some commuting locations. Most people in Fairfield commute out. And this is a chart of the most popular places being St. Albans City, St. Albans Town. And Burlington, I believe are the top three. And as well as the trends in school enrollment, which do so a slight increase, but not to the extent, for example, of school enrollment in the nineties. And as well as childcare availability. There is a review of the services provided by town. The energy section has all been moved to the enhanced energy plan, which is included in the plan as an appendix. Transportation section, which just reviews the roads in town. Recreation, reviewing the different recreation opportunities. This was also updated with some new ones. Some information on environment, things like slopes and septic soils that can be helpful for those looking to potentially develop a home. Information on water resources, the creek and the pond. And the swamp as well. Section on the flooding and different types of flooding that occur. Looking at the state river corridors as well as the flood plains identified by FEMA. Information provided by NR on species and wildlife habitat. This is a new section as well focusing on the new state requirements. Talk about habitat blocks, which are large areas of contiguous forests where large animal species usually live. So it just talks a little bit about the importance of maintaining those large habitat blocks, which function for large animal species, provide hunting opportunities as well as forestry opportunities. The largest one in Fairfield is in this sort of uplands area over here in that dark green. And most of that is in that uplands district for zoning that's tries to protect, limit development in that area. So. And then a discussion of the current land use patterns and the current town facilities and town owned buildings. Including now the common school. And a discussion of officials and staff of the town and a new photo of the town office. So going into the tomorrow section, this is where the main goals and policies of the plan are contained. So the first section is the land use section. So it reviews the policies for land use. There's discussions here of housing demand. Telecommunications facilities, not mean to highlight that. And the rural character of Fairfield with descriptions of each zoning district, similar to how they are laid out in the zoning bylaws. So. The, this has changed from the previous town plan to match what's currently in zoning. And then goals and policies related to land use. And if you want, I can stop at the end of each of these sections for comments or questions.
I know Julie has comments. I don't know where she wants to put those in.
They're more towards the end. Under education, town services, transportation and recreation. So it's a little further along.
Okay. So the land use section definitely has probably the most goals and policies, but this encompasses, previously each zoning district was kind of put out in a separate area. And these have been consolidated into one sort of section that overall talks about the land use goals and policies. The second section is related statement, supporting the future of agriculture in Fairfield. So this talks about the different solutions to preserve farmland and also recognizing that zoning is not always necessarily the best tool. And that things like purchase of development rights through Vermont Land Trust and other factors. Like current participation in the current use program can support the continuation of agriculture. And then there are a goal and several policies around that. Including some new ones like encourage young farmers and support farm succession and transfer efforts. So under the third section is about promoting small scale business in Fairfield's village centers. So this talks about the village designations that the town has for Fairfield Center and East Fairfield. And talks about the, the priority benefits that you get from that. And as well as the businesses in the village centers and supporting those small businesses. And then there are maps for each of the village centers that were updated. From the previous ones that were submitted with the grant application.
You can take that question to the select board.
What, sorry?
Charlie's just being silly.
Okay. Under preserving Fairfield's natural landscape and historic features. This is split into talking about the historic features. So things like historic buildings and barns. And then natural resources, which talks about water, earth resources, you know, trees, plants, that type of thing. And there's goals and policies related to each of those. That talk about protecting those resources.
I guess we want to bring in Tori to add a section about the historical society and that getting revamped and starting. Tori, are you on? Can you hear me?
Yep, I can, I can hear you. It's a little muffled, but I can hear it.
You have any comments or what are you thinking about this section in terms of historical society and where we see the town in the next eight years?
I haven't actually looked at this draft. So I, I was in a meeting maybe a month ago. So I haven't really looked through it. I guess I would, I would have to just kind of look after this and check it out. But yeah, I think, I think our, well, let me, I can see the goals right there.
My recommendation is to align what the historical society is doing with this town plan. So if your goal mirrors that, that's wonderful. But if there's things that we could add or take out. You know, it doesn't look to you for
Okay, yeah, the, the goals just from what I see. Yeah, it looks like it lines up. If, if someone could shoot me a link afterwards, I can just, just double check it.
Yeah, I can definitely send you a copy of this current draft. I think, I don't think that these particular goals and policies have changed that much since the draft that you'd seen previously, but I can definitely send this over as well.
Okay, great.
Um. I do think one thing that was added was talking about historic cemeteries as well, preserving those. Yeah, and then natural resources, similar type thing. I'm talking about trying to preserve resources while also understanding. You know, the, the limits of zoning. And then sustaining a vibrant community kind of encompasses all of the things around housing, education and sort of town services, recreation. All of those components are let up into here. I know one thing that we talked about was supporting housing for all segments of the population. So including senior housing. And we included a specific policy to encourage the development of senior housing. Education, the Fairfield outdoor classroom was highlighted as one resource in that area to continue supporting.
Emily, I did want to maybe suggest another goal under education. And that, as though this is Julie for everyone else. And that would be to encourage the use of town resources for educational purposes.
What do you mean, Julie?
So I mean, allowing the school to like access the town forest or access the recreation fields, which they do. Even the historical society, when that gets up and running or any, anything in the town clerk's office that might be of use to classes in the school.
And just, are you wanting that included because you feel access is limited or you just want to encourage it or what?
I, it's more for encouragement and just, you know, a kind of welcoming. The student populations and staff to access the resources that we have available. I don't feel any limitation there at all.
Okay. Keep going, Emily.
Okay, so then there's a section on town services and fiscal condition, which talks about maintaining the current services that the town provides. But also ensuring, trying to maintain a stable tax rate into the future and focusing on prioritizing capital projects that involve maintenance. And unless such projects are clearly tied to the goals and policies set for this plan.
I, one thing maybe to add to that. The town services is to continue to support the Bent North Memorial Library.
Again, are you feeling that it's a limited thing or it's already included previously as part of the town's infrastructure?
It's just a, just a, to enforce the positive relationship between the two entities.
Okay, go on, Emily.
So the energy section again has been moved to appendix. So we can see that next. Transportation, just reviews to provide safe and economical transportation network and to maintain existing pedestrian infrastructure are the two goals. And I believe this second one was one that we talked about quite a bit. In terms of there was conflicting opinions on sidewalks, but certainly maintaining the existing sidewalks that were built. Recreation. Talks about preserving and enhancing the recreation and scenic resources and supporting the recreation committee. And then this is something that we added at the public hearing, Julie actually recommended, which is a section on food access security and sovereignty, which talks about promoting consumption of local foods. And supporting programs that allow people to have access to healthy local food, like things like school programs that do that and gleaning programs, that type of thing. I think, right Julie?
Yep, and, and the food shelf too.
Yeah, and the food shelf. So that's the end of that section. If there are any that's there, then this portion simply talks about compatibility with the plans of neighboring communities and the regional plan. There are no significant concerns with land use compatibility between Fairfield and any of the towns around it. Or with the regional plan, it fits with the regional plan designation. And then there's the enhanced energy plan. So this is as an appendix to the plan. This is based off a template that NRPC worked with the states to create based off modeling that was done at the state level and then broken down to the regional level and then NRPC broke it down to a town level. On what it would look like for each municipality in the region to meet the energy goals that the state has set out. So you can see them here. But these are the energy goals that the state has set out about greenhouse gas reduction, renewable energy and efficiency. The benefit of having this over a standard energy section is that you receive increased say in the section 248 certificate of public good hearings. So those are the hearings for large scale, like renewable projects, like large scale solar and wind projects. And this especially allows the community more say with regards to concerns over citing. So this plan has very specific citing recommendations. That then if there is a citing concern, the municipality is able to point back to the plan, say they have a plan for promoting renewables. But that a project does or does not meet those citing requirements and that has a little more sway than a standard energy section. They included information here specific to Fairfield on land use and on the importance of the carbon sequestration with forest and agricultural lands. This reviews the existing thermal energy use and electrical and transportation energy use. Which is all data primarily provided from the state and from efficiency Vermont. And existing renewable energy generation. Which is relatively low in Fairfield due to some grid constraints that are also talked about in this plan. Then there's discussions of these future energy targets. Which rely on things like conversion to efficient coal climate heat pump technology and more efficient wood techno heating technology, so more efficient pellet and wood stoves. Transition to electric vehicles and increased electrical energy efficiency in homes through things like weatherization. And it also talks about potential for future electrical renewable energy generation. This is the section of this plan that talks about the mapping. And the maps are all at the back. They show areas where there's the potential for solar and wind and then discuss the areas of that which are considered prime, which are areas where there aren't known constraints, like say it's the village center or there's wetlands there or things like that. And then associated with that are these goals and policies. And these policies are very specific to the enhanced energy plan process. They have pretty clear, strict requirements on what is included in these goals, policies and implementation actions sections. So there are a number of them, more so than other parts of the plan, just to meet that requirement.
Hey Emily, this is Tori. Is there any, is there any incentive for the gas station owners in Fairfield Center or East Fairfield to install electric car charging stations? Is, I don't know if that's in here or not. Because I know, I know some towns, there's kind of a black hole. I would imagine St. Albans has some charging stations. But I don't know, like driving towards Bakersfield. I don't know if that could be an issue in the future, if, if a lot more people be, you know, buy more electric cars.
Yeah, yeah, there are.
They're saying that there's an incentive to put one in the parking ride behind the town office building and we could apply for that incentive.
Okay, interesting. Yep, that makes sense.
You know, that's then not on a private landowner.
Yeah, okay.
And it's state funded, which I like even better.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, same thing. I'm aware of grant programs that help like municipalities and others provide that type of facility. I don't know for like a private business owner that would then be, you know, charging rates if there are incentive programs or not, I'm not aware.
Okay.
Of any, but that doesn't mean there aren't funding.
So we should include that as a, as a maybe investigative charging station in the parking lot.
What?
We should include that as a maybe, like in the stations.
Yeah.
Also, I just want to make a note, we had a lot of discussions about the goals in the energy plan. We're not held to performance of any of those goals. They can be changed at any time. We would not be penalized if we did not meet those goals. It's just something to It's just something to strive for.
Well, yeah, I can summarize that.
Yeah, go for it.
Well, just the, the plan was partially authored by the Vermont Energy Investment Corporation, which is the parent organization of Efficiency Vermont. And they already received millions of dollars from Vermont Electric Utility Rate Payers, which is all of us. And by putting the vast majority of all transportation and home heating on the electric grid would increase their revenues immeasurably, so for them to author such a plan. And for the, the town to codify that plan in its town plan, I, I think creates a conflict of interest. Since it directly enriches the authors of the plan. That summarizes it. I can go into more, more detail if you'd like.
Keep going, Emily.
Sure, yeah. I think that's kind of the end that this portion with these goals, policies, implementation, that is essentially the the entirety of the plan with the maps here. So. I think that's the majority of the plan, if anyone has any comments, I'm happy to scroll back to any section that people had comments or questions about.
I know Julie still has input, she won.
Was that me? I don't know that I have input on the plan, but I, I guess I just wanted to to talk about kind of what I learned from going through the process with you guys and thank you for allowing me to be a part of it. But it, you know, there really are changing demographics in the town now and and what I see is there's a lot more elderly. More dependence on migrant farm workers and fewer farms and, and I just would hope through the plan and through all of our work that we can kind of address the needs of the elderly and the needs of the farm workers. Somehow, what I, what I had wanted to put in the plan, but I don't, it didn't get there for the farm workers was to look into Fairfield becoming a like a sanctuary city, but a sanctuary town, you know, so that we could. We can't, we couldn't guarantee safe access of the workers to the town and public services, but we could at least state that, that we encourage them to use our services. And then with the elderly, just, just in an effort to attract investment in senior housing. I think would, it's in the plan, but I think it, it needs to be acted on, not just sit in the plan. And with a fewer, fewer farms, I, my only thought was that. And also with COVID, there's a lot more recreation, bike riding, walking, I'm seeing in, in my neighborhood. And, and a lot fewer farm vehicles, farm related vehicles, so wondering if we could look at, and this isn't specifically in the plan, but maybe could be deducted from the plan or inferred by the plan. Is that we could look at maybe narrowing some roads that, that would be would slow the traffic down, so it would be safer for walkers and bikers. So those were my additional thoughts, but nothing to be included into the plan. Thanks, thank you.
We appreciate all your input, anyone else have comments at this point in time or questions?
This is Tori, Emily, I think that the select board might be curious to hear what the response rate was for, from the survey you guys did. It, it kind of shocked me how low it was, but I think it was actually on par with other towns, I don't know if you want to just touch on that real quick.
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers up in front of me, but I think we received, I want to say around 150 responses of about 10% of the adult population of Fairfield, that's pretty common for the types of surveys that we do and try to distribute. Is a kind of, our goal is to get at least that number. It is challenging and especially with COVID, it became more challenging to do outreach, but I think. You know, it's, it's always a challenge, but I'm happy that we were able to get that many people to get their feedback and comments. Saved in it incorporated into the draft.
And I, I guess my initial thought was, do you feel, I don't know if you took down demographics during the survey, but do you feel the comments you got from that 10%? Was it pretty mixed? Or, or do you think it only kind of covered a certain population of, of Fairfield?
We did look at a few demographic things, including age and geographic location, in terms of geographic location, it seemed pretty mixed, age skewed a little older than the total demographic of town, which is not super surprising if you think some people in that, you know, like 18, 19, 20 category are, are not really necessarily as tied into the town. As folks who have been here for longer and are, you know, established with the school, that type of thing. We did look at those kind of basic categories, we didn't do it in depth, sort of geographic or analysis to the level of being sure that it was 100% representative, but and also we did look at, at length of time in town, there was of course a small bias again towards people who were in have been lived in Fairfield for more years, but there was a pretty decent spread as well with that.
Cool, thanks Emily, and, and kind of echoing Julie, we appreciate the work that you guys have done. It's, it's easy for us to call in and nitpick things, but you guys have done a lot of work, so thank you.
Emily's done most of the work, to be perfectly frank, done a fabulous job and we're impressed with her. Anybody else got anything?
Melissa, I'm not gonna let that stand, the planning commission has done a lot of work on this plan.
Yeah.
And that a lot of times in a very challenging time for all of us, so you guys put a lot of effort into this.
Thanks, Emily. Alright, so what's the next step, Emily?
Yeah, so if there are no other edits, the ones that I have written down, unless there's any concerns with them. We're including a, a state policy statement around ensuring that town resources are available to the school for educational purposes and continuing to support the library.
And investigating a charging station in the park.
Yes, yes, and that one too.
Alright, so next step now?
Yeah, so I don't think any of those would be considered a substantial enough change that you would need to hold another hearing, so if there are no other concerns, the select board can motion to approve the plan draft or decide to wait to do that if they have any other concerns.
They may want an opportunity to review it a little more closely, we'll have a deliberate session about that in their regular meeting following this one. And then we'll get back to you as soon as it is approved.
Alright, great.
I just have a question on that charging station, would that be a revenue source for the town?
I'm, I don't, I think it would be, I think what, I think it would probably be a cost to the town rather than a, like how do you make people pay for those?
Well, it's you're, you're gonna have the town pay for people's electric charging?
Well, there's no cars that are electric in towns, I don't think we really have to worry about it.
No, but I, I, I think they do have, I think there are pay for charging apparatus, I'm not sure, but.
So if there was a pay for charging apparatus, I would advocate that it would not be a profit margin for the town, it would be a wash.
Yeah, okay, I see.
Provided, but that we would not profit from it, that would be slimy. Personally, but I'm just one person, that would be up to the select board. That's what I would recommend to them.
Cover the cost.
Yeah, there you go. Who's gonna use it anyways, does anyone have an electric car?
I, I think they would be mostly Canadians, Melissa, and I'm sure, hopefully, your relatives maybe.
All my brethren coming down to charge their cars at American rate. I think they can't afford that. Alright. I think we're done then, thanks all very much for coming, we appreciate it, and Emily, as always, you know, we appreciate you.
Alright, great, feel free to definitely reach out if you have any other questions or things come up or like any other, like little edits that need to be made.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.